Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield Town Council meeting of Monday, December 11th, 2023. I call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Ask my colleagues to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three is attendance. We have all seven councilors in attendance with all of us in the room except for Councillor Smith Galvin, who is participating remotely. Item number four is public engagement. Sherry, I believe we have one individual signed up for public engagement?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair.
All right. David Bisson, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphones, I would ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. The council may or may not choose to engage and may or may not choose to bring up the topic at a future meeting. But the floor is yours if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address and you can get started.
Great. David Bisson, 20 Hancock Road. I will try my best to state a three. This is a draft resolution that I wrote. I'm hoping the council will consider adopting. It's calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Israel and occupied Palestine, whereas all human life is precious and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. Whereas between October 7th and December 11th, 2023, armed violence has claimed the lives of over 18,000 Palestinians and 1,200 Israelis, including Americans, and wounded tens of thousands more. Whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk if a permanent ceasefire is not achieved and adequate humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas the Executive Board of the World Health Organization during a special session on the health conditions in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, approved a consensus resolution on December 10th, 2023, that expressed, quote, "grave concern at the catastrophic humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip and its vast consequences for the civilian population," and further expressed, quote, "concern also at the dire situation of hospitals and other medical facilities and ambulances and the obstruction of the provision of the fuel necessary for medical facilities for their operation, endangering the lives of the sick and wounded and preventing the conduct of medical operations and procedures and the operation of medical equipment, including incubators for premature newborn babies and surgical and resuscitation equipment for persons suffering from severe medical conditions," and further expressed concern at the public health management implications of the existence of thousands of corpses of victims in the Gaza Strip buried under the rubble, which are exacerbated by the lack of access to water, electricity, and equipment needed to bury the bodies of the dead. And including, I'm sorry, I'm going to just skip on to the result. Whereas the U.S. federal government holds immense diplomatic power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Wakefield demands that the members of the 118th United States Congress representing the residents of Wakefield, including the U.S. Representative for Massachusetts, 6th Congressional District Seth Wilbur Moulton, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Ann Warren, and U.S. Senator Edward John Markey, use their best efforts to urge the Biden administration to immediately call for a permanent ceasefire to end the current violence, and urges the aforementioned three members of Congress to call upon the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of adequate humanitarian assistance into Gaza, and urges the aforementioned three members of Congress to use their best efforts to ensure that the U.S. government does not transfer any additional arms or military funding to the Israeli government, and to call on the Biden administration to do the same, and urges the aforementioned three members of Congress to call on the Biden administration to vote in favor of U.N. Security Council and General Assembly resolutions and other votes calling for a ceasefire in the Israel-Palestine conflict. And that wraps up. I'd like the council to consider adopting it and if they do to transmit it to the members of Congress I named. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bisson. Sherry, anyone else for public engagement?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number 5A, we have an update and public safety feedback on the bike and pedestrian plan. So I believe we've got a packed room here for this. If our chiefs, Ms. Kekinda and Mr. Renaud, wouldn't mind coming up to the table. And Mr. Mayo, I don't know if you want to tee this up or?
No, I want to thank Bill and Aaron for continuing to work on this plan. It's been certainly a plan of a lot of discussion. Would you guys come up? All four of you come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, to answer the questions. They've worked hard on it, and I look at this as another update as we have more work to do on the plan. We had a very good meeting of the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, committee, I want to say, Friday ago. Very lengthy meeting, but a lot of information was there as well. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Renaud. I think he was gonna...
Usually good to see it over here. Too bad I printed it out. Good evening, everyone. Bill Renaud, town engineer, joined by Aaron Kekinda, our economic and development coordinator, as well as the two chiefs, Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan. So just kind of starting off, again, I'm going to go back to kind of one of our previous powerpoints just to, you know, kind of give it, come full circle here, because we've had a lot of questions on kind of what the goals are of the plan and, you know, what we, what we're, you know, how we're planning to use this. So, you know, again, our key goals are looking to encourage walking, biking, and rolling throughout the town, you know, and encourage that to key destinations, establish a plan to connect the destinations around the community, and advance our town's complete streets policy. That's probably the biggest one for what I do, because what ends up happening for the complete streets policy is I would have to look at bike and ped accommodations at every, on every street. So my goal with this plan was really to come up with targeted areas where we want to have improvement, and then I would go in my design phase to come and come up with an actual design for that area with the expectation that I'd be coming back to you folks for approval of that plan. So Steve mentioned that we did meet with our Traffic Advisory Committee. They also expressed some interest in seeing any plans that would, that would come out of this or any projects that would come out of this. So that would happen prior to me coming here to the, to the, to the Town Council. I would go to the Traffic Advisory prior and have a recommendation from them in any project that would come forward. So that's something that we're going to be incorporating into the updated plan. Again, we've had a lot of background community engagement, site visits. We did a survey in the fall of '21. We did public meetings through '21 and '23, which continued to outline the key goals and highlight, highlighted projects. Beyond that, we identified some policy recommendations to be incorporated throughout the town, mainly around bicycle parking. So kind of types of bicycle parking to be used within the town, and then also to look at covered parking and long-term parking to be incorporated within the town. The plan does have specific recommendations for locations on those guys. Crosswalks, rather than the four or five styles that we use today, Public Works would then implement a standard. So it would be the latter style. That's to the far right in your slide as a separate recommendation. We would look at some of them, I think, in high-vis areas where we would look at potentially like a solid, you know, around schools. We've done that currently. I think we would probably come to you for a policy on where we want those to be, but that would be down the road. Again, so planning, this is a plan looking at locations to improve. I still have to come back to you folks and now the Traffic Advisory Committee to get these projects approved before we go to construction. So planning, I'm seeing these as locations. You know, it may differ what I come to propose to you. I would expect from my experience in looking at a couple of these streets that they would change, but, you know, just keep in mind that we would be coming through with a design probably from my group or from a consultant that would lay out, you know, the new layouts of roads to accommodate bikes and other pedestrian accommodations. So we talked about the bike kind of tier system a couple of meetings ago, so I wanted to kind of go back to that just to make sure we all understand what we're talking about. So shared-use paths are really paths that are kind of away from the roadway, that are designated and kind of have their own space. They're two-way in most cases. We've approved one on North Ave. We also have our rail-to-trail project is a good example of a shared-use path as well. Protected bike lane, this is one of the ones that we looked at on North Ave as well. So we did the shared-use path as well as a protected bike lane. So protected bike lane would provide, you know, can be done a few different ways. One of the main ways it can be done is through a gore strip, which is kind of the hatch painting line to separate and give a little bit more room to the bikes. Another way would be the installation of flex posts, which I know can be a hot-button issue. I like the one in the top right. Probably is one of my favorites. If you see, they're actually using the parking as, as a, as the protection, which I think is a, is a very good approach. Not, I haven't seen it in use in a bunch of towns. Cambridge's done it in a couple of locations I'm aware of, but most folks haven't been doing that, but that's something I'm a big proponent of. Conventional bike lanes, it's basically just two lanes five feet wide to let bikes go through the, go through and on the shoulder. This can be adjacent to curb. It can also be adjacent to parking when room doesn't allow for some of these other more advanced treatments. And then the fourth tier down is when we can't fit two bike lanes, we want to have bike, a bike lane, you know, we would look at two separate streets where we would say, you know, look at something that's parallel, something that's going east-west. We'd have eastbound on one street, westbound on another street. Here's an example from Brookline on Washington Street where they did that. And then the last one is shared streets. And this is in part of our plan, there are a few streets that are recommended for this. And what we would have here is either just sharrows on the road or signage. So if you look at the top right-hand corner, there's just signage letting folks know that this is, you know, either the direction of a bike path or part of some type of route that is being proposed. Can also do shared, shared lane markings as well. This, when we go to shared, shared lane markings and shared streets, typically we're not going to be getting state funding for that. So that's just something to keep in mind as we go through our discussions. Jumping here, this is the slide that we had that outlines all the different projects within town. One of the comments I received at the last meeting from Councillor Dennehy was to identify a top five projects or so. So what I did is I looked at the greenways and kind of looked at those as what I'm planning to present today and other areas where we're looking to put in some, what are recommended for bike lanes. So jumping to those guys. So the first one, first Greenway corridor is going south towards Melrose. We're calling that the Melrose branch within the plan. So it is on Main Street from North Ave to Forest Street. Then it scoots off into Atwood Ave and use that as a shared street, then a shared-use path within the MBTA right-of-way, and then going through a series of low-traffic streets, kind of on your bottom hand, you can see where there's a bunch of turns as you get towards Melrose. Those are all, you know, smaller side streets, and that's what has been proposed. If you, you know, the consultant and myself, as we were looking through that whole corridor, there are issues with, with parking removal because there's several businesses that that's their only place to park. So that would, that would be very detrimental to those businesses. We didn't think that would make sense. So that's why we proposed it the way it is here. Looking at the second one is the Stonem Branch. So this is looking to follow a series of low, low-traffic residential streets from downtown all the way to the town line, Chestnut Emerson, Gould, Converse, Jordan, Fox, and Mountain, all being looked at as, you know, essentially there would be some signage on the street, maybe a, a sharrow or two, but that would be, that would be all that would be done on those types of streets. The Break Heart Greenway. So that is connecting downtown Wakefield to the trails within the Break Heart Reservation, also the high school, Woodville, and the tech. Basically, that would go down Water Street with a bike lane. Farm Street is a shared-use path. That's something that's been discussed as part of the high school project and something we were looking to move forward with anyway. So that's something that's already planned to be implemented. Looking at the Quinipawal Loop, which was a discussion we had previously. So the proposal is a shared, a shared-use path width of 12 feet around the whole entire lake. We know that that can't happen in some sections. The goal is to get the 12 feet. Even on North Ave, I had to neck it down to 10 feet in sections because I didn't have the room. The proposal is Main Street from Lowell to Salem to have a shared-use path and a bike lane. I have a cross-section within the next slide that I can share with you folks on kind of what I think could, would work out there. We've had a lot of dialogue on it, so we took some time to look at that because it's been a hot-button topic here. Church Street, Main to North, shared-use path and partial bike lane. That's what was proposed. So it's only in one way. That was proposed, what was it? I lost my train of thought. Oh, so Church Street, Main to North Ave, shared-use path, and then partial bike lane where we can fit it within the roadway. North Ave, Church to Quinipawal Parkway, that is in construction. We've done the sidewalk portion of it, some of the drainage work, and we'll be moving into the shared-use path and bike lane next year. That also narrows down our travel lanes to 11 feet. Quinipawal Parkway is in design. This is something that is going to be funded through Cabo Cabot and Forbes Project. It proposes a shared-use path, partial bike lane to go around the development itself and then tie back into the shared-use path. This is the Quinipawal Loop. I'm, this is based on our vote last time to not remove any parking, so kind of a cross-section view with the two, two roadway, the roadway being necked down to 12 feet as opposed to the 14 to 15, 16 in some sections. We would narrow down the, we would narrow down the grass strip opposite the lake to gain some, some area. And then instead of having the shared-use path with a buffer and, and then the gore strip that was being used, we eliminate the gore strip, we push the bike lane and have it elevated, so it's at the same level as the shared-use path and sidewalk area, and delineate it with curving from the, from the parking area. So this is an example, like I was saying, where we have the, the parking protecting the bikes. Top right-hand corner kind of is what I would envision it looking like with a wider sidewalk. This is an example, I believe, from Cambridge. And then other bike projects. So other recommendations that we've received from MAPC, so Albion Street, Main to the town, Main Street to the town line, that looks at bike, bike lane and sharrow. Broadway looks at bike lanes. The residents on the roadway have asked to have a bump-out in one section as part of some outreach during the repaving of that project. So as you folks know, every project that we go to pave, we go and have a neighborhood meeting. There was some concerns on the proposal and wanted some traffic calming to be addressed, so we looked at a bump-out area there that, to slow traffic in one of the main sections. Prospect, I'm sorry, Lowell Street, Main to Salem to look at bike lanes to be incorporated there. Not positive that we can fit those in the whole run. I think there would be sections where we would only have one bike lane in one direction. And then Prospect Street, North Ave to the town line recommends bike lanes. We definitely have the width there to make that happen, but that would be something I think that we would look to potentially go for grant funding for and do as a larger project, adding in the, the gap sidewalks that are there too. And then Vernon Street, Salem to nowhere, Salem to, Salem to Lowell Street. Yeah. And so that is something that's being paved and something that we'd be looking to come to you with a proposal for probably in the spring. And then Water Street from Farm to the town line as bike lanes and that, you know, basically taking it, you know, what was the, the Break Heart Reservation Greenway piece that was noted and extending that down to the town line. We also had a project that we've been working on at Oak and Green in Greenwood, and we've had some public outreach out here. We came in, so the, the area, existing conditions on the left shows this big expanse of pavement. You know, I know if anyone's driven through there, you don't know who's supposed to go, and it's kind of like a chicken in kind of game. So we looked at a couple of different options. One was a roundabout that would have fit there, and we got some feedback from the residents and the butters that that is not preferred. So we came up with a second swipe at it. And that's what you see here. So a three-way stop in providing a lot of green space towards the top there. So that's something that's been advanced and is continuing to be advanced. This is a good grant project as well, so this is something that would be grant-funded in all likelihood. And so again, the universe of projects, this kind of, you know, I've highlighted a series of these, of them. Though you'll notice in the orange, there's a bunch of the sidewalk projects. Those are ones I'm not necessarily bringing up specifically here because you've funded the lion's share of them. I'm assuming that you're supportive of all those projects because you funded them. So we have a few other ones that I would consider to be larger investments that would be probably further down the road. Once we get these rounds of sidewalks in, there's some low-hanging fruit that we could snip away, and then like Forest is the one I'm thinking of. There'd be a need for big retaining walls and, and that would be a large cost to construct. So I think that would be kind of pushed down the line, but something that we would keep in our capital planning universe. This kind of blows up the, the roads, so you can see them a little bit tighter as to what we're looking and what's being proposed. You know, this was also in your packet, and hopefully you've had a chance to peek through that and in the draft plan. Keep in mind, we will be updating this within our next update, so we have not completed the update to the plan since the last time we were here. So what we're trying to do is address some of your questions and then also bring in our public safety folks to weigh in on the plan. And we've had a, a sit-down with them, and I'll turn it over to them.
Good afternoon. Any particular place you'd want me to start?
I think if there's any general commentary, Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan, that you have, we'll kind of let you do that, and then we can open up to, to questions from the council.
Okay. So I will admit that I read the October version of this plan, and I didn't quite understand it when I read it. I was under the impression that it was an ironclad plan, and if it went into place, it would be exactly how the plan was, was written. And I missed the key words that were in there, concepts and recommendations. I went back, I read the November version, and those words carry a lot of meaning here because after my conversations with Bill, our walk-around with the MAPC, and the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, I realized that it's a concept that can be changed, it can be altered, and anything that would, would be approved before it's implemented would go through the TAC, and I was satisfied with that. I did have some concerns when I, when I first read the October version. I didn't think some of the, the ideas in there were feasible, but it was a concept, and I missed that key word that was in there. It was concept. So I felt much better after I talked to Bill and Aaron and did the walk-around and the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting. That's what the TAC is there for. The TAC is there to review these things. That's the process. And if any part of this plan goes through them before it's implemented, I'm satisfied with, with their recommendation.
I would agree with Chief Scory. I think it's, it's important to note that the TAC, they utilize traffic consultants and, and there's plenty of room in the future for, to make, like, to tweak a plan once it, once it gets to them. So I would agree with that.
Great. And just before we open to questions, Ms. Kekinda, any comments from your end?
No, I told Bill, this is all yours tonight. I'm moral support and can answer any questions that Bill can't answer, but I'm sure he has that covered. No, I think, again, I'll hone a kind of what they were saying, that this is plans, recommendations. It's not the end-all, be-all. We will be going in front of TAC for any big project, projects that we move forward. And I just want you guys to try to keep that in your back of your mind as we kind of move forward. So a lot of hard work has gone into this, and we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. And I do want to express sort of our appreciation for the work that's gone into this. Obviously, Mr. Renaud, you and your staff, and Ms. Kekinda, but, you know, Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan, for the work that you've put in the Traffic Advisory Council at the last meeting. You know, we've had a lot of robust discussions on this, but I don't think any of us would, would make the argument that this hasn't been a, a significant amount of effort and, and thought on the part of, of our staff. So we appreciate all the work that's gone into it. Let's open it up to questions. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Demersky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this updated presentation. I did have a few questions on, on this. Mr. Renaud, you had mentioned about the, the concepts, also concepts along the lake, and you talked about narrowing the grass strip between the lake and where this shared-use path would be. I know, so that people are clear, we have that strip, a strip that runs from, from the lake to the sidewalk, and then we have that narrow strip that runs from the sidewalk to where the parking is. And like, I think we all know that, that very narrow strip between the sidewalk and the parking is, in essence, used as an extension of, of the sidewalk.
Exactly.
What, when you say the narrowing of, of the grass, which are you referring to?
Opposite the lake. On the, so right now, we have a little bit wider grass strip. So in the sections that actually have sidewalk on Main Street, you can see that there's a wider grass strip. I want to say it's like four feet wide or so. So we're going to take some of that real estate to, to just kind of tweak the, the cross-section.
So would that be between the sidewalk and the road or between the sidewalk and the, and the lake itself?
Between the sidewalk and the road.
Okay. So there would not be any compromise, real estate between the sidewalk and the lake through any of this, right?
At this point, no. Again, so it's a 60-foot right-of-way that I had out there. So what we looked at was kind of coming up with a cross-section that would work within a 60-foot right-of-way. So I've done that. I have to confirm clearly that, you know, the right-of-way could extend in other areas that is beyond the back of, the back of the sidewalk, then I'd have to kind of revisit the design. But looking at it kind of, you know, 10,000-foot view, 60-foot right-of-way, here's a proposal that would work. I think that meets most of the needs of what everyone's been talking about. Saves the parking and still the, the concept of the plan can remain, so.
Because I do, I appreciate, you know, Chief, what you were saying about the idea of concept, and we're talking about concept, but in my experience, before this body, concepts become reality pretty quickly oftentimes. And I know, to your point, Bill, when you were talking about the modifications that you made in, in Greenwood, that was obviously in response to resident, you know, input, which I appreciate. But I do question why we continue to go down this path of, of having so much emphasis on bicycle accommodation because I don't know that it, there's a just, there's, there's a clear justification of giving it the amount of emphasis that, that it seems to be getting in terms of looking at all these projects going forward. And I'm mindful of the fact that with state funding, we have to accommodate multimodal. So I'm not, I'm not dismissing that as, as a consideration in all of this, but I, I still don't know, you know, kind of how we got to the point of it's going to be just a presumption that we're adding this significant amount of bicycle accommodations. You know, I, I feel like we've like, we've kind of missed a few steps, and we've advanced this to a point where now, you know, we're just kind of doing it. It's just kind of like assume that, okay, we have to incorporate all of this, you know, all this bicycle.
Well, I, I think that comes down to this body's vote, right? So if this body votes down the plan, then the plan doesn't move forward. I mean, I think it's that simple. But I mean, the intent, again, is, you know, for me to move forward with, with my paving projects and my streets and to do the stuff that, that I'm proposing to do, I need to know if we want to do that on these streets. So that's why we're having this dialogue, and, you know, the town will decide what they think is best, and you folks will decide what you think is the right approach.
I'm just a little, a little concerned about the idea of identifying this as policy because I don't think in recent history, this body has a very good record of establishing meaningful, workable policy. And so when we're talking about policy, then that just becomes presumption, I think. I think the, the words are almost used synonymously. And then when there is discussion, it's like, well, we have this policy in place. And I can think about other instances where policies that have been created by this body have lain, nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
But have been created by this body, suddenly are referred back to as, oh, well, because we have this policy. It sets up a certain precedent.
Yeah.
That I don't know is necessarily, I feel like by the time we're voting on this plan, baked into it is, is a presumption that this is a high priority to do, in terms of establishing a policy to give you this level of direction. And I, I, I think we've missed a couple of steps.
So there was steps, I think, prior to some of the members being here, right? So there was a complete streets policy that this board adopted, so I'm required to implement it. So it's really, I'm caught between that statement and, you know, implementing the previous policy that was developed. So my intent here, again, is to identify locations where we're going to do it. Other sections that don't have it proposed, I'm not planning to do it on. So I can just move forward with my paving projects and just move that forward with, with minimal amount of, of, you know, additional design. So I, my staff can stay targeted on, you know, on the, just the, the getting their bids out, and we don't have to do the large amount of, of outreach per se that we would do for the bike lane. So I'm trying to use this as, as the process. So I think we've got a lot of feedback on it. So, you know, with, again, if the Town Council votes to not approve this, that's fine. I just, I would be, I, yeah. It's just direction. That's what it comes down to. So.
All right. Yeah, I just wish maybe they think about how, you know, All right. Yeah, I just wish maybe they think about how, you know, other ways in which you can receive the feedback and direction you need without necessarily establishing a policy that may or may not be, you know, best long-term for the community. So just want to think about.
Yeah, when you're talking about policy, I hope you don't mind me interjecting. Are you talking about the complete streets policy or are you talking about this plan being a policy?
What, not the complete streets specifically, but what we're talking about here, right?
Yeah.
Precisely. What's been presented. And on that too, just from a process standpoint, I know, again, as liaison to DBW, I talk with you, you know, Bill frequently, and I know that you guys have, I feel like, really caught your stride in engineering especially and being able to kind of get projects and have them streamlined and efficient. And I respect what Chief is saying about TAC and that input because I think that's an important piece to this. I'm wondering though, if you could speak to how like a modified, a modified approach, you know, and the engagement of TAC would impact the way in which your team is able to do what you guys are doing. Because I'll say you guys are churning out a whole lot right now, in a good way.
Yeah. So any project in, that is in the plan would require a lot more design typically and then the input would, going through those two boards is going to delay that project. So basically what ends up happening, I have to start looking years out now on these plans and these projects to make sure that I'm doing the public outreach component, coming to these boards and doing that. So it is a heavy lift, but it's, you know, as long as it's voted in and, you know, I'm hearing pretty clearly that we want to have the procedure laid out. The Traffic Advisory Committee provided us feedback with that. Counselor Vincent did, I believe, at the last meeting as well. So, you know, it just, it slows down the operation, no doubt. But as long as we're getting it right, I think, and you folks want to do it that way, then I will do it that way.
How can we avoid the slowdown though and still achieve the objectives? Is there a way to thread that needle? Because I respect what Chief is saying. I think it's an important aspect of it, but I also understand what your team and how your team operates and trying to reconcile the two.
To reconcile it and address the Chief's comments, that might be tough. I'm not sure I have an answer for that one. Yeah. I mean, that's tough. I don't know if they're, I mean, the time of going to these meetings, that, I mean, it's just time. It delays stuff.
Could you maybe talk to your team about maybe ways in which, kind of going forward? Because again, I know the work that you guys are doing in your office and it's, you're getting a lot done. And I'm concerned about, you know, issues of streamlining being, you know, sidetracked. But I also equally respect the Chief's comments about TAC having, you know, important input into this. So let's maybe see if we can figure out a solve for that. Because I'm just concerned, you know, Bill, that you and your team are going to, like you say, have delays. And I don't think that that's going to benefit anybody.
Yeah. I mean, I think what it becomes is a lot bigger of a planning process for us. I mean, we look out, we typically look at like three years out or so for what we're planning to do and try to stay ahead of things. I think that we, you know, we'd have to be looking at kind of our year three plans and discussing them in year one type thing. That's what would end up happening.
It just feels like you can't be as nimble that way.
Yeah, but again, it doesn't have every street in it. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And, you know, some of this stuff is just painting. So some of them, when it's small and we're not making major changes to the footprint, I mean, that's coming in and saying, well, folks, do we want to put the, we can fit one bike lane on Lowell, on Lowell Street. Do you want it or don't you? That's, here's what it would look like. I mean, I would think that type of stuff is quick. The other stuff, you know, when we're looking at more, you know, larger changes, it adds another meeting. But, you know, I think that that might be good for the stuff that has kind of big, big impact and big changes to the roadway. So it's just a trade-off, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Hi. Thank you all for being here. I actually just wanted to follow up on what Counselor Demersky said. And I guess I'm a little confused because Counselor Demersky, you say you don't want a plan. Plans tend to imply policy and then things so happen so fast. And yet, it's really great that the TAC is knowing this is coming and going to be willing to look at it. And we can have the comfort of having them look at everything, but that's going to slow things down. I mean, I think that's exactly what we want. This is a plan. Nothing is absolutely required, but slowing things down a little bit and not a lot, because I have full confidence that the TAC can meet in a timely matter and make decisions in a timely manner. But I think that this gives it a level of scrutiny and public input that we might not have without the TAC there. So I am, no, everybody knows I'm in favor of this plan. And incidentally, I think we've had lots of steps to say that there are people who want this, from complete streets to master planning to vision. And it's not just about bicycles. It's about pedestrians. It's about getting people out of their cars and doing other things as well and traffic calming, which are all things that I think TAC can also evaluate. They're the only body that has a traffic engineer and has engineering expertise on this. So I think it's going to be critical to have them. And I actually think it's a check and balance, this plan being treated as a plan.
Thank you, Counselor. Other members of the council. Counselor McLean?
A comment and a couple of questions, Bill. One comment for those who were not riveted to the most recent Traffic Advisory Committee meeting. I believe it's accurate to say that the expert that has just been referred to indicated that he was pleased that this council had preserved parking on the main street side of the lake. Just wanted that to be stated. Beyond that, I think I share to some extent the concerns that concept sometimes becomes design. I think I personally, if it was up to me, I would rather go project by project instead of having this whole big townwide plan. I wonder whether we're adopting best practices, if we vote for it, and then whether, you know, that might become the reality, if you will. One thing you mentioned, Bill, I wanted to make it clear, if I'm correct, right now, our primary project of all the things you discussed is North Ave. Is that correct?
I would say that and the sidewalks, both.
That and the sidewalks, okay. And North Ave, you've indicated that, would that be called a protected bike plan, what we?
It would, yeah. So we have the gore strip built into it.
Because of the gore strip?
Yeah.
Which is, could you describe the gore strip?
So the gore strip is, if I jump back on the slides.
Just to be clear, we're not going to have the white posts all the way down North Ave?
You voted to have them.
All the way down North Ave?
From the beginning of the bike lane. That was what was voted by the town council. If you folks decide not to, it's, again, they're temporary ones. They're not permanent. They were planned to be removed for winter maintenance stuff. So they're just like the ones that you see when it says, you know, yield to pedestrians and crosswalks, something like that. They would just be placed at an interval of 10 to 15 feet.
And what is the protected, the gore strip? What does that allow in terms of protection?
It gives more room for folks. So the bikes can go by each other. It also allows the cars to have a little bit more wiggle room.
Okay. But it's not a wall or a curb or anything like that?
No, you can do that too. That's, that can be done as well.
Right. I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, they want, they'd like to have vertical elements, but the gap also counts out.
Did you indicate the Church Street you envisioned as being 11-foot lanes?
Yeah, to 11 foot. That's what I presented, yeah.
Right. And that is the best practices according to MAPC if, or is it DOT if we have a bike lane?
Yeah. I think best practices might be a strong stretch. I would say that it's something that's allowable and works. You know, typically the standard lane width is 12 feet. In sections where you can neck it down to 11, I've done this in my previous, my workplace, on a few streets, it worked very well. It helps the traffic calm as well because you have a smaller lane. People tend to, as they're crowded in, to drive slower.
Would Church Street be a shallow or protected with gore strip?
Protected with gore, protected with gore strip and the larger shared use path for the younger users so that they're not in the bike lane. Because the bike lane's on the roadway. That's the way we designed it. Because we couldn't make, we couldn't make it, we couldn't provide a curb to separate and tighten it up because of all the driveways.
And what size do you envision the shared use path to be in footage?
12, 10 to 12 feet. It varies because we don't have room in sections.
Right. And that would, that would involve, you're saying, younger bike riders?
Yep.
And all forms of foot and running traffic?
Yep.
Going in both directions?
Yeah, they can use both directions. We would, so we would paint it with the skip line like you typically see in my older, in my slides. And folks can go both directions. They do now. This would just give you a lot more room. I mean, I think we all know that it's difficult in sections to walk, you know, in tandem in sections. So this provides a lot more room to make that happen.
When you talk about 60 feet on Main Street, if we go to the non-lake side of the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
Where there's sidewalk about to Cordis and then there's dirt after that and stone walls.
Yep.
Would you see moving that curb at all?
Yes, that's what I was talking about. So I'd be moving that two feet towards the sidewalk to gain the room to fit the parking in. That's where I'm gaining the area.
I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm on the non-lake side where?
Yes, I am too.
Okay. And you're taking away grass or adding to grass?
I'm taking away grass. So it's a wider grass strip there. It's probably four or five feet in sections.
But we're also going to be putting sidewalks over there, aren't we?
There are sidewalks there in sections. And then we would be expanding the ones that are missing, yeah.
Right. Because they're missing, I think, from Cordis all the way up to.
Yep. And we would just look to move the curb line.
So you'd have a smaller sidewalk?
No. Still be, the width would be the same. The, it's just less grass. So the grass buffer.
What would your sidewalk be on that side of the street?
Five feet.
Okay. And on the other side of the street, I was pleased to see, because it was the first I learned of the possibility when we voted to retain the parking, that we might have the possibility of parking bike and everybody else. But if it's a designated bike lane and then there is parking, or parking and then the designated bike lane, I think would be the more appropriate order. And then we have everybody else on how many feet of shared path?
If the goal is 12, it fits with 12 for 60, depends on where that 60 lands towards the lake.
And when you say 60, you're going to basically?
60-foot right of way, back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk.
From the stone walls on the other side of the street?
Stone walls, 60 feet over.
All the way over?
Yep.
Right. Because I am a little concerned about all the foot traffic, including runners and, you know, baby carriages and dogs.
Yep.
On that one particular area. I wanted to ask the Chiefs, does an 11-foot lane on Church give you any concerns?
For me, I commented on the 11-foot lanes when we did our walk along with the MAPC. It sounds narrow to me. I'm not an engineer. I understand the argument that it slows traffic. It's a calming measure. It may very well. We'll see. But I also understand that if it's not wide enough, that it can be changed. And that's what I, it's one of the things I like about what my conversation was with Bill is that if something needs to change, it can be changed. These, what do you call it, the?
The flex posts?
The flex posts. They can be moved in, they can be moved out if we need to create more space. 11 feet sounds narrow to me. I know the Chief is going to talk about the width of a fire engine, the mirrors out. It sounds narrow, but I also understand the engineering argument that it could slow traffic.
I think it's important to note that when we're talking about truck traffic, it's not just fire trucks. It's, you know, any commercial truck. I mean, I am a little concerned about the mirrors and how much that they extend, you know, beyond truck. There's different models and so forth. So I'll be taking a really good look at that during the Traffic Advisory Committee meetings. But, I mean, it works in other communities, so they must have figured out a way to do it. I have very little experience with those flex posts, so it's going to be a learning experience for myself as well. But it's certainly something to keep an eye on and pay attention to.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Yes, I do have to acknowledge that Army beat Navy. Hopefully you can read the Navy score, but I made the Army score small enough. I did put it on there, but it shouldn't be available, it shouldn't be viewable on the camera. I'll start with the Chiefs to give Bill a little bit of a break. And I met with you today, Chief Scory, and I sent Bill and Aaron my questions in advance to expedite this. First of all, I'm personally elated that you guys have had an opportunity to look at the bike plan. I think it's very important that you be involved in the process. I also appreciate, Chief, that you confirmed the research I did about the role that the police department had in Melrose, Stonem and Redding on both complete street projects and on the, on their bike plans. Confirming the fact that law enforcement was involved in looking over their plans as we now have you involved in the process. I heard your comments earlier today when we met and tonight, that you were comforted to learn that the TAC, at the TAC meeting, that the TAC is going to be involved in the implementation of any projects. What I did want to do at this juncture was to actually commend Mr. Mayo, because it was Mr. Mayo at that TAC meeting who said emphatically that the TAC will be involved in the implementation of any of these projects. So I was very comforted to hear myself that the town administrator took the lead of saying that would indeed happen. Can you turn to slide 17 for me? Chiefs, you guys have had an opportunity to look at this slide. This is the slide for the main street side of the lake. Chief Scory, do you agree with the retention of the parking spaces? And can you describe how you think that having the parking spaces on, between the vehicle traffic and the bike and pedestrian lanes adds as a buffer zone that enhances safety? Can you expand on that?
Sure. I was happy to see Bill present that at the TAC meeting early December. I appreciate the fact that the parking is retained and I appreciate that for two reasons. I think that, and Bill commented on this in the slide presentation with a photo, I think it's important to have parking there because I think the parking provides a safety barrier between vehicle traffic and the pedestrians and the bicyclists. I mean, in an ideal world, we could have, I'd like to see parking added to North Ave to protect all the people biking and walking and running on North Ave. But obviously, that's not a reality. The road's not wide enough. But that opportunity exists on Main Street. So I'm happy to see the parking retained there for that reason. And the other reason is, if we were to remove that parking, I believe there's 180 parking spaces there.
Yep.
Those cars are going somewhere and they're going to go into the neighborhoods off of Main Street. And that becomes a parking problem that falls back on the police. We start to get complaints about cars in the neighborhood. So I don't see the need to remove parking. It provides a safety barrier for people using the lake. And to remove it, we just force the traffic, the parking somewhere else, just creates an unnecessary problem.
And that unnecessary problem that's now avoidable by having this plan is something that did happen in the past down in the Greenwood area?
It did. Once we had the, excuse me, the paid parking for the tee, when we put the meters in, the people who were parking there start to make their way into residential neighborhoods. They went into Greenwood Ave, Oak Street, Madison Streets off of Main Street in that area. So we ended up putting up two-hour parking signs in some of those streets. Nice residential streets. We don't want to be littering our streets with two-hour parking restrictions, forcing our residents to get two-hour, to get our resident parking passes. Unfortunately, we did it down in Greenwood area. It worked out. People started to use the paid parking. It worked out in the end. But we, I don't see the need or the want to be putting two-hour parking restriction signs in nice neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Bill and Aaron, as I said, I sent you my questions in advance. I just want to go over a few of them with you, if I may.
Sure.
The first one deals with the way ahead. And you got back to me, Bill, to said that you agreed with the approach that I had here. So step one is going to be that MAPC and you all, as the town officials assigned to work on this, are going to update the written plan.
Yep.
To reflect the town council's November decision concerning the parking on Main Street. And also to fix some of those other areas that we talked about in the past, especially those figures being off and things of that nature. Upon the completion of that document, then the plan is to take it back before the TAC. I did notice that Lieutenant Anderson asked for the TAC to take a look at the written plan again.
Yep.
Because the one they got on December 1st, they don't, they gotten the version that now is the current version, but it's, we know it's outdated. And they got it only two days before their meeting, so they didn't have ample time to look it over. So the TAC is going to have another meeting at some point in time to look over the plan. And the two Chiefs are going to have an opportunity to look over the updated plan. And then upon the completion of that, it's going to come back before the town councils that we can look at it and make, hopefully make a decision on it. Is that, that's accurate?
And a public comment period.
And a public comment.
Yes. I would expect that we're back here somewhere late January, early February, would be my guess, to give adequate time to have the TAC meeting and to have public comment with the final document.
And the other questions I had for you, Bill, especially in your capacity, is the town engineer pertaining to slide 17. So the, are those pedestrian lanes or should I call them shared path?
Which one?
The ones closest to the lake, where the people are walking.
That's a shared use path.
The shared use path?
Yep.
If that design that you have up there on slide 17 is one that you can implement, would it be your opinion that the shared path lane that's located on the lake side of Main Street and the sidewalk on the other side of the street as well, would be safe for walkers and joggers to travel along the portion of the lake between Salem Street and Lowell Street?
Yes.
Would it also be your opinion that the designated bike lane would be safe for bicyclists to travel along this side of the lake?
Yes.
Is the roadway wide enough for emergency vehicles to travel on the two lanes that you have in there?
Yep. So that's 12-foot lane. Both of those show 12-foot lanes.
And do you foresee having to remove any of? And do you foresee having to remove any of the parking spaces? You may not be able to answer that one right now.
I can't answer that. I would say, I mean, you know, I think when I was here originally, what I expected is that there's probably going to be a need to remove them for the drainage work that you folks, we've talked about previously. That would be what I would expect. But I don't, we wouldn't need it based on my current analysis, which is 10,000-foot view. Look at this. We wouldn't need to.
And at the TAC meeting on December 1st, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but there's somebody who's on the TAC that is a consultant with VHB?
VHB, yeah.
He was the gentleman that said he liked the bike pedestrian plan. And I think he also went on to say, the one that Councilor McLean was alluding to, he went on to say that he was glad that the parking was retained. Is he a transportation, what is VHB?
He's a PTOE, so he's a professional in transportation and engineering.
Professional in transportation and engineering?
Transportation operation engineer.
So I would think that those that are concerned about the retention of the parking on Main Street, I would hope would be comforted, like I am, that that expert, you in your capacity as the town engineer and our police chief, feel that this way forward on Slide 17 is one that enhances the safety of pedestrians, joggers, bicyclists, and people driving on that road.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement.
All right, thank you very much.
I just got cross-examined.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Counselor Daney?
Thank you very much for coming here again, and thank you to our public safety people for coming. I think your input has been so valuable and helpful and has brought me great comfort level with this. And your revision of the plan is really great that you, I think it's really creative that how you were able to figure out Main Street. That's great. So I feel very comfortable because, one, is the Traffic Advisory Committee, Police, Fire are all involved in this and having input in the early stages, which I think is great in the early stages, because I do think sometimes it can go from design to implementation too quickly. And I'm happy that we were able to retain the parking. That was really crucial to me. I want to make sure that whatever decisions that we make, that we're not pitting different groups of, different groups of people against each other. This seems to be a way that we're able to accommodate bikers and, you know, try to get people to be more active. But we're also being able to, for people who have mobility issues or people who just want to sit in the car by the lake, that they're able to do that. So I think that's wonderful. And I also like that you're mindful of business communities, because that's the business communities. Because I want to make sure that whatever we do in this bike project doesn't do anything to inhibit or hurt businesses and that we're able, and like what you did on Main Street, not going through the business community on Main Street, I think is really smart. Those sidewalks are already narrow. There's such limited parking there, and rerouting it, I think makes a lot of sense. I live on Overlook Road and off of Renwick. It's a lot of hills, so people are going to have to be in pretty good shape to go up those hills. But I think that that's a great, I think that's a great, I think that's great. I really appreciate that. I did have one question about the bike path around the lake. Is it, will people be able to pass each other or?
That's the intent. So we have, typically what you do on a shared use path is you have a skip line that goes through, I think the...
Oh, I remember seeing it, yeah.
Yeah, so the shared use path one, if I zip back a couple.
You're talking about the shared use path, not the bike lanes, right?
Yeah.
The shared use path is the ones used to people walking on?
Yeah.
So you can see they have like the little skip yellow line in the middle.
Okay, yeah.
So the idea is that you're, you know, you're staying to the right when people want to pass you.
Okay.
And that could be passing or coming at you.
Okay, okay. Yes, so no, I think, I feel a whole lot more comfortable now and, you know, it's, I think the bike, enhancing biking in our community is a good thing, as long as it's on at the detriment of any other group. So, and I think, I think you did a good job of showing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any final comments before we move on? Counselor Abbott, sorry.
So I just, no, that's fine. I just want to thank you again. I know you've come in front of us often. Always nice to see Chief and Chief. I do, I just want to remind everyone, everyone's, you know, wait, and we've seen this presentation often over the years. I'm glad it's kind of coming back eventually to us for a vote. I think it's getting stronger and better each time. I do, like I said, as the Traffic Advisory Liaison, we welcome community members to reach out and tell us what they think about this plan. It'll be on our website if it's not there already. But let us know. We want to hear from you. And I also just want to remind everyone that the reason we want this plan, that other towns have done plans, is it comes with money from the state. So we have this plan. It comes with money. It is an economic booster, and I think we lose that a little bit. And I think, you know, I think what Counselor Smith Galvin said is just important. I want everyone to remember that it is, it is a biking, walking, strollers, runners, all of that, safety, traffic calming plan. And just to remember that as we go forward. So thank you all for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. So Counselor Dobrowski, anything new to add?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So just to go by the numbers, because I feel like that they get lost in this. The shared use path, ex portion of that, you said is 12 feet, correct?
12.
Along the lake on Main Street.
That's the goal, yeah. It may need to neck down to 10 in sections. I'm doing that on North Ave, for example.
Right. And then the bike lane component that is being proposed is how wide?
Five.
Five?
Five or six feet, depending on what I can fit.
I think like, again, and they're going to be on the same grade, correct, right?
Yeah, I'm proposing that in this situation. So that eliminates the gore strip. So that was three to four feet or so on North Ave. That gains me three to four feet in this cross section. So that's one of the reasons I'm doing it.
Because a concern that I continue to have when I hear you talking about this is there's no question that that stretch of Main Street along the lake needs a wider, like, walking surface. I think there's universal agreement on that. But, you know, my anecdotal analysis, and I think Councilor McLean would share this as well, is that most of the usage that is observed along Main Street is walkers, runners, people with strollers. I see very few bicyclists. And I know that, you know, again, we talk so much about being data-driven in this. And I know when we spoke about this last time at the last meeting, you know, this notion that if you build it, they will come with the bikers.
That was going to be my response right now.
Yeah, I know. And I think that's an awful, like, that's an awful, you know...
There's data behind it. I can get that to you if you'd like.
Well, I'm saying, you know, like, for example, we are able to gauge like how many, Chief, how many, you know, cars, you know, are passing down the street, for instance. You know, we're able to kind of quantify things when we're making decisions. And this feels like, I'm looking at this as, all right, we basically have, call it 18 feet of precious real estate along the lake that we're trying to figure out best use for. And what, in essence, what you're saying is, two-thirds of it would probably be for, like, walkers, runners, people with strollers, et cetera. And, like, one-third of it would be for cyclists. And I don't think that the usage numbers support that kind of, you know, breakdown between the two. So that's why I'm asking about, you know, I don't want people to be confined to just 12, just 12 feet, because I think the vast majority of people who will continue to use that, that expanse are not going to be bikers. I think they're going to be the people that are currently using it. And we, and I'm sure that anyone out there with a counter could be able to tell you that that's, in fact, you know, we can, that's supported by the data now. So this idea of, all right, well, if we create all these accommodations for bicycles, then we're going to have this mass, you know, influx of bicyclists. I'm not convinced that that's the case. And I keep pointing to Malden as an example of where a lot of, where an overdevelopment of bicycle accommodation has backfired on them. And now they're trying to, you know, backtrack a lot. I don't want to see us going...
And I think we're taking a different approach than they did though, too. So we're not doing it just following the typical complete streets policy. That's why we're doing this exercise, is to identify the locations where we want it, so it's not everywhere. So they do get used. So we're identifying the locations to get from A to B, whatever that may be. A may be the school, B may be the lake. And we're getting you to those locations. So we're not everywhere in town. That's the distinction in my mind. I mean, you'll look, Salem Street's not on there right now. There's a reason behind that.
And I think we gave some pushback on that. It's like, we just want to make these connections between these well-utilized buildings in town. Make, offer other sort of connections, whether that be sidewalks, the bike lanes. And I think too, with the Lake Quanapawat, you're saying that you don't see many bikers and what Bill was going to say, Bill, that they will come. I think we have to remember too, that this is a recreational use, and maybe currently people aren't feeling comfortable riding their bikes. I know, me with my children, I wouldn't take their bikes down there, but maybe if there was a path, it might make people feel more comfortable. So I think I, just wearing that different hat too, that that's more of a recreational use as well, too. So I just wanted to throw that out.
I think we just need to be really mindful of this, because we're, it's like we're solving for a problem that I'm not convinced is is as significant as some would lead us to believe. And I think that's a real, that's a real challenge for us as a community.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith Galvin and Counselor Abbott?
Sorry, Julie, can I, I just want to follow up on that. Billy, I did hear you say that you could get us data?
I can get you data.
That has projected. I think that would be helpful to all members of the council. So if you could just make a note, thank you. Sorry, Julie.
No, and absolutely, there is very solid data out there. And I just want to say, I mean, I hear what you're saying about the parking, and this is what we talked about last time. I mean, I said all along, I didn't think we needed a parking study. I thought that we probably could have figured out parking and biking and pedestrians. And I'm really thrilled to see that's what's happened. Counselor Dobrowski, to your point, are the bikes going to come tomorrow? No, but guess what? Those walkers can walk in the bike lane until the bike, to the, until the bicyclists come. I mean, this is all flexible. We can, we can use each other's space. The point here is that we are sharing the road between all different motor situations, bikers, walkers, strollers. So I think everybody gets very rigid in kind of what can be used for what. And, you know, if it takes the bikers a while to come, more power to them. Let the bike, let the walkers do their, just like the walkers now walk on the grass, right? Those are called desire paths, because people walk on the path because there isn't enough sidewalk. So I think that this is exactly what we're looking for, and I really appreciate the team for putting it together. And just one more thing. I don't think, yes, I think we're solving for a problem, but more importantly, I think we are creating the conditions for a much brighter future. And to me, that is what this town council and what I was elected to do, and that's why I like that this is not so much solving a problem as creating an opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor. Last comment, Counselor Daney?
Last comment. I do want to say is that I think that this is, you know, we look at certain communities and say, didn't work out so well, and you can look at traffic scores. But I think what we're doing here is much better, because we're not taking parking away. We're not impacting business communities. We're not taking parking away from businesses. And I think that that's really important. I think that's an important element. And, you know, if this, it sounds like we're not doing anything that's permanent. So if it doesn't work, then there's, there's, you know, I...
We repaint the road.
Yeah.
And remove it.
So...
Some of these you can. I mean, the ones that would have permanent installations would be highlighted when I come back here to make sure you understand that you're making a permanent-ish decision. I mean, nothing's permanent really, right?
I mean, I wasn't, to be honest with you, I wasn't real happy the last time because of those issues that I said, but I feel so much more comfortable now. And again, you know, part of this is about just making sure that our town, everybody has good quality of life and that we're not pitting different groups and saying, you know, oh, you park by the lake, go someplace else. We're not doing that. We're accommodating everybody. So I really appreciate your creativity and hard work on this.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming back to us, so that's it.
Thank you. So process-wise, and I appreciate Counselor Vincent alluding to this, so we are still awaiting kind of the final, final draft of the plan, taking into account the feedback we've received so far, some of the things that you've presented. Do we have a timeline as to when we'll have that? I know there have been some network issues at MAPC that we're kind of dependent on.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think they're going to get it to us. We're going to take another stab through and make sure everything's tight. We found a couple of changes that didn't necessarily carry through the documents, so we'll make sure that those aren't the case for this final version, in theory. Hopefully the final version.
So we will clean all of that up before we have a publishable version?
So that would be, that will probably extend us through the holidays, is my guess. So you'll be looking somewhere, probably beginning of the year, is my guess.
Okay.
I would note too, because I keep hearing about procedures, so, I mean, I'm planning to write into it that the Traffic Advisory Committee will provide recommendations to you folks in that any project before implementation that would have.
Wonderful.
So that is planned to be done, just to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Great. So more to come in January. Thank you very much for your time again, Mr. Renaud, you and your team, Ms. Kikinda, you and your team, Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan. Thanks for making the time tonight. We know this is a busy time of year, as it is for all the time for you guys. So we appreciate your time here tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 5B, volunteer engagement discussion. Mr. Mayo, this is you?
This is me. This is me, thank you. And I think, number one, we should thank our community members on all our, on all our committees, but particularly the Traffic Advisory Committee. That is a long meeting and some pretty robust subjects.
On Friday mornings.
On Friday mornings, yeah.
Better that than Friday night.
Are you going to put that WCAT? Can you make that? Oh, there you go. Thank you. So, thank you. So in, and we had our retreat. We did talk about looking at our committees and making volunteerism and engagement with boards a priority. And when I met with the chair, he did say, let's get an update on this by the end of the calendar year. So here we are in December to talk about this issue. And I really think that, number one, is we really need to thank our working groups. We have over 35 municipal communities and working groups, and also a lot of nonprofit community groups that we, that we also work with. And we actually have to compete to get people to serve on these committees. And we compete with, although we don't, these aren't our committees, but we had a little discussion before the meeting here, sports organizations, PTOs, you know, any personal causes and state or national organizations belong to. So there's a lot of competition that we actually have to get board members. So that does make it a little bit difficult sometimes to do that. So we kind of talked about that. We do, we do compete. I, residents may not know about open positions, but I think we're getting a lot more hits. We have a lot more information out there. And I think people are really starting to understand more about each board and what they're about. And probably because this council made the decision, you know, during the pandemic and to continue this post on, that all of our meetings, including subcommittee meetings of boards, are available at any time, you can see leisure at any time, you know, online. And we put it up, and people are able to do that. However, we do have some issues where maybe we're not, people are concerned about time commitment. And I find that for projects, if the specific project, like the Permanent Building Committee, we had a couple openings there and we just, we just advertised for them and for those openings. And very quick, people want to come in, because that's a project, right? I can see at the end of the day, the high school's built, or there's an addition to the Walton School, there's a Greenwood roof, there's a public safety building. Some of these other are a little bit more difficult to kind of explain what's tangible about it. We're hearing a lot about personal connection. People, some people would love to be in-house in meetings like we are here. Other committees are saying they love being remote, because it's very easy for them to participate in meetings. So we are going, we are going to go with this hybrid. And like every other supply chain issue, it's slow to get these things in, but I feel that by the end of this year, beginning of next year, we'll be able to have most, if not all, of our committee meetings hybrid in a lot of locations, and I'll talk about it. I will say that a barrier to joining municipal committees and maybe any committee now is social media can be a difficult place for public figures. And my advice to people that serve on committees is, don't look at social media. Do what you think is right and take it from there. So anyways, how can we help with our limited pool of volunteers? We really should make sure that their feedback is meaningful and worthwhile. And when I think about people that serve on our capital planning committee, they are, they feel very worthwhile about a lot of what they do, because they can see it. It's tangible. A great example actually is a project of Mr. Vincent's, Councilor Vincent's, the Soldiers and Sailors Act. They see that happening right now, the Soldiers and Sailors Monument. They see that happening right now, because the statues are gone. You're going to see them coming. And that's a really great thing, and a lot of people in that community feel really good about it. So I think we have to, we have to look more about that and provide resources when warranted. And this council has been very good about increasing the budgets in some committees, much as it kind of breaks my heart sometime, and I got to figure out a way to pay for it, but it's really done really well for a lot of it. But it's really done really well for a lot of it. One thing that is really huge, and I think that we need to do more of this, is we need to acknowledge our volunteers consistently and also with the annual recognition event. And I think that the was the first one we did was right before COVID hit. I mean, like the day before.
Literally like two days before everything shut down.
And and that's that's made a great difference, people. But I also think we have to talk about our unsung heroes. And I'd like the council to consider if maybe once a quarter or once every few months or to bring in an unsung hero. And it may be someone who doesn't really sit on a committee, but someone who does something extraordinary for the town or ordinary for the town, but does it all the time without being asked. So I think those are things we should look at. So I think that we need to do a couple of a couple of things. I think town council a few years ago, we talked about every committee having a description on the website. And we do. And talking about this with my team, I think some of it is a little bit dry. You know, it kind of a little bit rote about what it does. So I think what we want to do is kind of, we'll be looking at updating those, making them more marketing-ish, if that's a word, and really hopefully having some volunteers share their stories. And I think that might be much more impactful to get some more people come in. Like I said, a lot of communities, we do really well. There's some we have a little bit more hard time fulfilling, and that's something we'll look at. And if anybody has, and we have this on, you know, social media and everything, you know, hard copies, library, senior center, if anybody can think of new modes of outreach. We talked a few years ago jokingly about police departments hiring. And I think I sent you all a film of a police department that did a did a song, did a country song to recruit people. So if anybody can think of anything like that, we certainly could be looking in that direction. This is a big thing here. These will be completed as many volunteers really want to get together. And they really, I mean, a few people on the finance committee, which I I meet with every two weeks, like like this board, like this, the town council, for, you know, about six months, every two weeks we're meeting. Some of them had never met each other in person and came on during COVID. And, you know, we kind of went out for a little get together and first time some of them have met. So that's very important to people that we do that. So we will have out, we'll have meeting rooms where people, if they still want to stay remote, they can certainly do that. The state still allows that. I would assume the state will continue to allow that permanently. But, you know, we'll have to see what the legislature does. Town hall will have two conference rooms. B B Library has the, I call it the trustees room and a conference room. Public Safety Building Community Room, that one is they are updating that right now with, you know, the the equipment to do that. That is going to be a very important room that I can see for Z B A and planning board and things like that, that they have a lot of neighborhood that want. And they kind of want, people want to come in and see the plan, even though they see it better on Zoom. In my opinion, they want to be in the room and see that. The Civic Center Heritage Room will have that and the Senior Center. So we really, and thank you to the council for putting a lot of money into that, the ARPA funds to allow that to happen. So I think that will and will make a difference completely. And I thought I put a picture up here of our last volunteer meeting. We had it right here up at the high school cafeteria. I think you were all very nervous when I took that picture, but I did survive.
I believe you were standing on a rickety table at that point.
Standing on a rickety table, yes, I keep trying. But I think that what you'll see from us if with if the if the council concurs, kind of redoing a little bit of those descriptions, being a little bit more of a marketing program, talking about some personal stories, because a lot of people are very proud of the work that they do on these committees. And another part of that is some of them don't even want to be thanked. They don't want to be recognized, you know, Steve, I just do this because I like to do it. I don't want to go to a meeting. I don't need to go to a meeting. I don't need to get something. But I think I think recognition is good. So very quick, very brief, that's the kind of where we're going. I will say that most of our committees are filled. There's a couple that we certainly need more people for, particularly the Human Rights Commission. I need some people and they put on some wonderful programs that they need help with the subcommittee for. And I think most of our other committees are pretty good. We actually have more than we need to that are volunteering. And I kind of always think of when we don't have, when we we can't appoint some committees their numbers by either charter or by, you know, creation. Is there another is another slot that this person volunteer, we could we could entice them to do so? Very brief, that's where we're going, but I can't thank our committees enough. And they do a fabulous job. And I think we need to do more to recognize them. They certainly make my job a lot easier. So that's it. Open for questions and comments.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments before we open it up. First of all, I think as we're talking about volunteerism and as we're talking about filling boards and committees in town, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't highlight the work that Sherry Dalton does. So anytime we have an opening, first of all, just 35 committees keeping track of who's in what slot, what's open when is a Herculean task. And getting that information out when we do have an opening is something that does take a great deal of effort. And Sherry does an amazing job with that. I'm sure that I'm embarrassing her completely, speaking of people who don't like to be recognized by by saying this. But I, you know, we wouldn't be where we are, I think, without Sherry's great work. So thank you, Sherry, for everything that you do and really helping to keep all of this up and running. Second point that I just want to make is that we will do another volunteer event in the spring for individuals who serve on boards and committees. We don't have a date for that yet, but we we will plan on doing that again. And I would say feedback on how we can make that event, you know, special and meaningful for our volunteers would be welcome and appreciated as well. You know, we, you know, in a group that I volunteered for years ago, I remember the the chair at the time saying, you know, it's important not to punish people for volunteering. And, you know, I think that goes for a recognition event. We want it to be something that people will get something out of, want to go to, and not something that they feel obligated to go to. So happy to take any feedback on that offline as to ways that we can make that a more important event. So with that, let's open it up for questions or comments. Councillor Smith Galvin.
This is great. I I've been thinking about our youth volunteers, partially because I'm the liaison to the youth council. And and I don't know exactly how many committees have youth or student representation on them. I think the school committee does, certainly the environmental sustainability. We're going to be talking about that later today. And I know H R C, I feel a little bit like particularly the committees that have student representatives or even youth council liaisons. I want to make sure that we're really utilizing them well. Like, I mean, I can tell you, I got some feedback from a parent last year who said, you know, my daughter's on on the E S C and we and we have the actually have the student, all of our kind of reports, town council report, everything is at the end. And that's a long time for these students to sit on a call. And they have schoolwork, they have a lot going on. And so I don't know what the solution is. Part of me thinks maybe this is something we need to take back to the youth council and get their input on. But I just wanted to throw it out and, you know, figure out whether we, because we want, I think they're an amazing pool of volunteers, not just while they're youth, as they're going to grow and become, you know, full voting citizens and residents. So I just would love some feedback on that and and may kind of take it upon myself to go to the youth council and get some feedback.
Great. Thank you, councillor. I will also say, as a former liaison to the youth council, they run an incredibly efficient meeting. And, you know, when you talk about sort of being mindful of their own time, there's probably lessons we we all could learn, myself included, from that from that perspective. Other comments or feedback, councillor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Trines. The one thing, I'll just go back to my experience with the Human Rights Commission, especially back in the very early days when we started with nine members and we embarked on some of the events that have now taken place many years. Martin Luther King Day comes to mind. We had subcommittees and we would have three people from the H R C sit on the subcommittee. And we advertised it as as we should for open meeting law. And members of the public would come to these meetings and some of them would actually participate in the subcommittee. And we would give them, you know, assignments that they volunteered for to help put the the M L K event together, for instance. And that was a way for members of the public to get involved without being assigned to the committee, to see whether it was a good fit for them, to see what the the time commitment would be. And actually, the H R C ended up having at least a couple of members that joined because of their experience in working on our subcommittee. And I found, especially when we only had nine in the beginning and it was a lot of work trying to put these events on, we would have been much more difficult for us to do that if we didn't have these these volunteers to come to our subcommittee and participate in the projects and then decide that, you know, some of them, they wanted to join the H R C. I I thought that was a good way for people to be able to volunteer without having to make the full commitment to join a council or a board or a committee.
Thank you. And I wonder, Mr. Mayo, if that's something that we can also highlight. Committees that, you know, obviously, it's hard to volunteer to be part of the zoning board of appeals if you're not on the committee, nor is it appropriate. But it maybe if we could highlight committees where there are volunteer opportunities outside of full committee membership. I I would be remiss to, and I appreciate the reminder if I didn't mention as well, speaking of community volunteerism, the Human Rights Commission is looking for nominations for the the M L K Coretta Scott King Recognition Event that they do, which does highlight community volunteerism. I believe, I don't know. Friday is the last day for that. So if folks do have individuals that they want to highlight those unsung heroes, great opportunity to do that. Sorry, councillor Danahue.
Could we think about having like a volunteer fair? Like where we have different different organizations just in one place that people can go around and just find out what each board or committee does and ask questions? And then, you know, people want to sign up.
We do have a lot of committees and community groups, nonprofits, that have tables at Wakefield 101.
Yeah.
And they do talk to people there. So.
But that's a smaller.
It's a smaller crowd, so we have, we should think about another way to get more people. But it we do have a lot of people who are very interested at that event. So I think we have to do a better job of following up to kind of reel them in.
Well, I think that sometimes it can be, it can be, people don't know, it's the unknown, right? Like, I'd like, well, I don't know how to get, I don't know. But it's a low risk way for them just to kind of go to this fair and then say, oh, what does the Human Rights Commission do talking to a member? What's the time commitment? Oh, why do you like doing it? Just it's a it's a lower stake.
Yeah.
Way of getting people kind of engaged.
Councillor Dobrovsky.
I think also the idea of kind of blending those two concepts. I'm not sure why Wakefield 101 just has to be intended as a new resident experience because there are a lot of folks who have lived here for five, 10, or even 20 years that may not be aware of things or may be out of touch. So maybe if we think about re redefining that as an event that is, hey, learn the latest about what's going on in Wakefield, new residents and, you know, more more established residents alike, maybe that achieves what you're talking about, councillor Danahue, but also, you know, keeps the spirit of 101. But I don't see why we have to, but it just broadens our our audience that way.
And just to add, I think that was the hope of Town Day if the weather had cooperated. So I think most of those groups do plan. I know. I know a lot of groups had planned to get tables at Town Day, which is open to everyone. And I, next year, I think will be a great opportunity for people to have those tables. And, you know, I both town, I I know the H R C usually gets a table at the farmer's market, was planning on doing one at Town Day. So I think Town Day is kind of turned into for the whole town to learn about opportunities.
Other comments. One other suggestion that I would add, as we think about kind of reaching out to folks, we do have a ton of people that volunteer for our P T Os. And, you know, one of the things about that is at some point you kind of age out of being a P T O parent. And I wonder if that's sort of a pool of individuals that we should try to engage as well. You know, if you're, you know, active in the Dahlberg P T O, but, you know, your child's moving on to the Galvin or you're active in the Galvin P T O, but your child's moving on to the high school, if there are some folks there that we could try to engage a little bit more proactively. I mean, because there are some superstar volunteers where, you know, the number of opportunities change as your as your kids get older.
I thank you for all the feedback. We'll keep keep plugging.
Thank you. Moving on, item 5C, ARPA update. Mr. Mayo, this is you again.
Yes, this is this is me again. As we had talked about before, we will have quarterly updates. So what I'm going to give you right now is through December 5th, 2023, expenditures and what have you, if you could get, there you go, perfect. So as we talk about Wakefield's share of the ARPA funds was a little bit over $8 million. Some of it was for county, some of it was for town. And where there is no real Middlesex County anymore, we get to use our share of that money. So we have spent quite a few of it. This is real review for everybody. We used ARPA funds, I think, pretty carefully in the 22, 23, and 24 budgets. Hopefully, in the 25, we won't need to use any, but maybe for projects in there. So that's all in the budget there. That's all been voted on by the town council. We also had some ARPA expenditures over the years during kind of the tail end of the COVID crisis for a lot of items, and we have seen these before, including, I think, the FIT Court, which was May 9th, 2022, T C meeting, kind of a one off. And I do hear that people enjoy that immensely. So it's been a great addition to that area. And about a little over a year ago, we did make some, I I think the council member, we put out kind of requests for what people wanted to use ARPA funds are for, narrowed them down, approved the numbers on the left hand side. The Energy Assistance Fund, we have seen a huge increase in that and earlier in the season than we did when we first did it. I think that's a combination of our outreach and the state got their act together a little bit. And so people that are getting state funding, they've they've kind of figured that a little bit better. But also, the oil companies are really kind of being one of our biggest promoters with us because they're hearing from their clients and they're saying, hey, don't you know if you're in Wakefield, you can get some money on there? So that's that. And that's been really well. And I think I sign requisitions on that every week. So it's probably another 6,000 or 7,000 more today than than after the 5th. Lake Corner Power, cleanup bathroom, Vets Field, the 44,000 is for the design. The council will remember that we did talk about, we actually ended up moving the bathroom facility after the after the public period comment. And it's going to be a little bit bigger to accommodate the farmer's market. I've actually already met with representatives from the farmer's market to make sure we're going to accommodate them and what they need, even down to the type of doors that will make it easier for get their stuff in and out of it. So that were great, great meetings with them. So that number you're going to really going to see increase quickly over the next, probably not until the spring, we'll have to buy the unit and have to put it together. But really, no construction is going to happen now. Lake Pathways, that was all done, all the design work is done in house. These are those little kind of pathways mainly on North Ave. All the money will be used on the actual cleaning and helping the pathways up there. Rail Trail Wakefield Mobility, that's $1 million that's been out. We walked it the other night. Tree replacement, we actually used up our state grant money, a D C I grant of $40,000 first and some money that we got back from some trees that were taken down from FEMA when we had that microburst. So we do have, I know councillor Dobros would be very happy about that. We do have some money for for trees. We're not going to plant them now, though. We're going to wait till the spring.
Technically, you could.
We could. Well, I don't know. Dennis would say no. We saw a lot of sidewalk expansion over the last year, and we still have a lot to go. So the money that remains in this sidewalk account will be used in the spring. And you're going to see sidewalk completed on Montrose, Nahann Street, Elm Street, Parker. We'll resume that in the spring. Again, we can't use that money now. Lowell sidewalk extension will be awarded in the spring of 224 as well. So a lot of that work will be done. We ended up with two issues in sidewalks, A, supply chain issues. I know people are sick of hearing it. I'm sick of saying it. And the weather was just horrible. We had a bad stretch of weather. We don't want to be pouring sidewalks in the in the rain and what have you, and they don't want to work. So that's coming up too. W C A T, we had already handled that. And M W R Water Truck, we talked about the conference room upgrades and there'll be more spent in the upcoming months and weeks. The A D A swing, that's at the Dahlby School. Civil War Monument Evaluation, we have $150 left over on that. Probably a very good, very good bang for our buck there. And title searches, you know, we talked about, we have a lot of town owned land and. And title searches, you know, we talked about, we have a lot of town-owned land, and how do we own it? Is it, do we have clear title? So I'm actually having some fun looking at those, bringing back my past life is looking at those things. I haven't given many to Tom because he doesn't want to look at them, but I'm happy to do it. But we have some jobs to do, so I would ask that the council be thinking about, we have about a little over $2 million or $2 million or so that's unappropriated, which we need to appropriate by about a year from now, September 31st, 2024. So maybe we could kind of go through the same process we did before to get input from the town council and others to see where we go and kind of narrow that down. Now, we don't have to expend it by 2024. Just need to appro, we don't have the project done, I should say. Need to appropriate it. We have another two years after that, make sure the projects are done. So we have time, but I don't want, I don't, would like us not to be scrambling, you know, a year from now, saying, what are we going to do with this, this money? So I think maybe at our next quarterly update, maybe we can have some more ideas and move some things forward. So I'll send something out to the board if that's okay.
That would be great. No, I was going to suggest maybe if we could all give ourselves some homework to give you some feedback prior to next quarter's update. Steve, can I just ask, on the Energy Assistance Fund?
Yes.
Last winter, my recollection was of the $103,000 that we've spent now. We had spent something like $78,000 last year, if that seems right, unless I'm completely misremembering.
We had spent $79,000 at our last update.
Okay.
Which was in the spring.
So the, you know.
It was in September.
$25,000, $24,000 since then is basically for winter '23, '24.
Yes, this is, this is new, yeah.
I would just ask if we do find that we're starting to spend a lot there to the point where we're getting towards that $400,000 amount?
Yeah.
If you could bring that back to us for discussion before the next quarterly meeting so that, you know, if there is a need and there's kind of an appetite from the board to, to supplement that, that we have the opportunity to discuss that.
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's been the largest increase, and a lot of them are projects anyway, but as money spent, that was the largest increase.
Okay.
Last year.
Thank you, Counselor Butt.
Just, Steve, on that also, I know, I know the Energy Assistance Fund is great. I'm really happy that we created it. It is a lot that our, the lead person is our social worker and spends a lot of time. So when we went to the senior, you know, their, their version of Wakefield 101, he was just talking to seniors in town who wanted to apply, and it takes a lot of time. And so I think when we start talking about next year's budget and talk about HHS, I'd really love to know how much of his time is spent on this because that, you know, wasn't the vision when we created it. It's important, but I really like to know how this is staffed out and what, you know, the funds isn't going to the staffing, but I'm guessing it's almost half of what his job has become. And so I just love to, to understand that a little better.
Yep.
Other comments or questions? Counselor McLean?
Just as a comment, I would like everybody to come up with some ideas in terms of how we spend that money that last year. My personal preference is that we don't, that we do some special things with that, what's left of that money. By which I mean, I think last time, we had about $30 million in requests for, for a limited pot. I would prefer actually, since we have full reserves for the town and we have capital planning for the town, that we don't use the ARPA funds necessarily to fund town budgets, rather fund special projects. That's my own personal viewpoint, may not be shared by anybody, but I'm going to have a couple of ideas and, you know, I think it would be very easy for, you know, this group of seven to, to come up with $2 million in ideas.
I think I came up with $20 million of the $30 million.
Yeah, well, you're going to control yourself this time, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Dennehy.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, can we, can we kind of make that conversation sooner rather than later in terms of, of kind of us all giving to you, submitting kind of our ideas?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then allocating it? I don't see any reason why we need to wait to allocate.
Yeah, I was hoping to get all of your feedback and put it together over the next couple of months. I'm coming back with a quarterly update on this anyway, and that may be the time, March?
March.
Yeah, the thinking was not that we would have this conversation in December. It would be well in advance of that.
I think before March, though. I think that, I think we could start having the conversation. I think starting to have the conversation, I don't see a need to wait till March.
So I think if counselors can get their feedback to Steve before then, we can certainly tee it up earlier.
I would like to see it on before, before, for us to have an initial discussion because I know I'm ready, so.
Okay.
I have some, I have my little list that I've been keeping, so I'm kind of excited about that.
So the first thing is, is not getting the lists in so I can compile them.
It could even be, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Please go ahead.
It could even be a preliminary discussion.
Right, right.
We're not going to vote on this material now, but we're going to start putting out some of our ideas.
Counselor Dobrowski?
I raised this issue before about the fuel assistance, and I think that it was important that we did it at the time that we did, and I know that we allocated the amount that we did because of the financial circumstances that existed for a lot of folks at that time. But now we're to a point where we're, I never, I never, I didn't vote with the understanding that that money was $400,000, that was just going to be parked there indefinitely. I thought it was to be getting us through that winter season that we had voted on. I thought that was the general understanding on that. And the problem that I see with continuing to have that funding in place is, to Counselor McLean's point, it really functions more as an operating budget line item. Because once that's exhausted, then if we've created this reliance upon a municipal funding source that is not recurring, then what comes of that? Then suddenly, those, those ARPA funds are gone, and then that program is ostensibly gone. Or we have to then fund that program, which then creates, you know, that, that wasn't the purpose of ARPA funds. I mean, when we, at the time of approving it, a lot of folks were having a lot of difficulty with, with their, their heating costs for a variety of reasons, you know? But I think we need to be able to redirect folks better into the state programs that will be there longer or in perpetuity as compared with this. Because the, the whole purpose of the ARPA funds was not to take funds that you would use for an ongoing, you know, expenditure or, or line item and apply those. And I think we had a pretty good practice of that. It was supposed to be kind of like one-offs and like, you know, we did, I think, $400,000 for schools, for instance, because there are some needs there, testing kits, you know, those sorts of things. Those were kind of like one-offs. And I, I saw this fuel assistance as a one-off program as well in the same way, because I don't see it appropriate to be then incorporating that kind of, an expenditure into our operating budget going forward after those funds, but they're gone. So I think we really need to think long and hard about what that looks like going forward because that is not an indefinite source, and I don't want to see people budgeting around that. I also don't think that the financial circumstances that exist for most people today as compared with the time that that was put into place are necessarily the same. So I'm all about certainly helping people, but I think we have to be reasonable and, you know, thoughtful about the way in which we are directing these dollars and the way in which we may be creating certain reliances that the town then would not be able to, would be following through ongoing forward. So I think that's, I, I look at that as a lot different than, than at ADA Swing, which is again, a one-off expenditure, for instance. It's just very different. The sidewalks, same thing. I mean, of course, there's ongoing maintenance of those, but by and large, we were trying to expand the network there. This is very different, and I think we need to be mindful of that when we reconvene this discussion.
Just one thing on that issue I want to point out, and I can't remember which meeting it was where we talked about this, but we did as a council decide to roll that additional money. What was unspent in that $400,000 over to this winter? I want to say it was a discussion, Steve, in March or April, if I'm remembering correctly. So we have had that intentional discussion. I think your point, though, is right. We haven't, we have not allocated or budgeted anything going forward. So right now, that program only exists with those pool of, that pool of funds, that limited pool of funds that we've already voted to allocate.
But, but we've created now, again, my concern is, we've created now a certain expectation or we've perhaps modified individual or family budgets, building, you know, building in this as a, as a source of subsidy that will not be a source of subsidy when the ARPA funds are extinguished. So I think we'd be mindful of that.
Other comments? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Trent. I just wanted to note that we're not a Community Preservation Act community like other municipalities, many other municipalities in Massachusetts are. Obviously, that's a tax levy whose money is primarily used for things such as affordable housing, restoration of historical buildings and structures in town. So when we move forward with looking at how to expand the ARPA money, I'd like to keep in mind that we're fortunate that we have $760,000 to start in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but we don't have any other funding resource for that. So that's one of the things to keep in mind because we are not a CPA. We won't have money coming in on a regular basis for things like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the restoration of historical sites. So we might want to focus a little bit on those too because we have an opportunity to fund them through the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith-Galvin, I can't actually see you, so if you have your question, please feel free to chime in now, otherwise we can continue.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dennehy?
I just have a question about the tree replacement. So if somebody, if somebody has a tree taken down on their property, it can be.
On their property?
I mean, on, on this.
Town property.
Town property. Then that can be.
Because I get a lot of calls about people that take their trees down and want to know if we're going to replace them.
Oh, that's excellent.
As much as we'd like to, no, it doesn't happen.
Got to give them credit for asking.
Yes.
But if it's been, then it'll be, it's not replaced automatically. They have to call to have it replaced?
Well, it, it depends. If one, sometimes that maybe it was on the side of the street that has the electrical wires, foam wires, so they're going to put a different item there. So normally, normally, we work with the arborist, you know, most often, they are replaced.
And they would call DPW?
They can, but in, but in most instances, it's kind of in the queue, but they should certainly call to remind us.
And say people want a tree planted outside of their, you know, on-town property that doesn't exist, can they call to have that?
They can certainly call to have that, and we'll have Dennis take a look to see what would and would it make sense.
Okay, that's great, that's great. I'm not sure a lot of people know that, so I think that's really great. And then another question is the MWRE truck, the water truck.
Yes.
How is that being used?
We've used it at every event that we've had. So it's really at the bike rodeo event, we would have had it at the, we had it at Festival by the Lake, we've had it at Town Day, we would have had it at Town Day again, 4th of July, it was there, so it really is.
The Turkey Day 5K?
Turkey Day 5K, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Just a plug for your question on trees, we will be talking about a tree and vegetation policy in an upcoming meeting, so keep holding that thought. All right, any final questions on this topic? Seeing none, moving on to item six, energy park easement. Mr. Mullen, is this you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may.
Mike McCarthy and Peter Dion are, should be on as well. I didn't want you to jump in, maybe you would have finished it all, they would have been happy.
So, Mr. Chairman, you may remember that at the fall 2022 regular town meeting, under Article 5, the town approved the grant of a, an exclusive perpetual easement by the town to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department of about an acre of land for the purpose of an energy park. And this was on town-owned land on Hemlock Road. The problem is that the land is technically open space, which implicates Article 97 of the state constitution, which protects open space, conservation land, that kind of thing, and requires that if you are going to change the use of such land, you have to get a vote of two-thirds of both houses of the state legislature. So town meeting authorized the grant of the easement and also an application for special legislation to approve that Article 97 transfer. And the good news is that the legislature has approved this transfer in the form of Chapter 71 of the Acts of 2023. And in consideration of this grant of easement, the MLD is granting a conservation restriction to the Wakefield Conservation Commission over a certain land that it owns, also removing an electrical substation from Ballister Street and planting some trees on town-owned land. So what is before you tonight is the first step in this process, which is a vote by the town council to grant the easement and the execution of the easement by your, your council. I think that that document ought to be held in escrow until the other, until the consideration is granted because the special legislation states that the grant of easement is contingent upon those other things being done by the MLD. But I would suggest that you want a vote authorizing or approving the execution and conveyance of the grant of easement, and, and then I'd ask that you execute the document that's before you.
Is there a motion?
I would move that the town council grant and execute the energy park easement contingent upon performance by the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Mr. Dion, any, Mr. Dion, any comments from the gas and light perspective?
First, I'd like to thank the town council and the town for their support, and especially for this last portion, which was the home rule petition with our legislative delegation up on the Hill. Representative Lipa Garabian was stalwart in carrying forward all the necessary changes that went back and forth between the two houses just to clean up the document, and we really appreciated all the work of our entire delegation to make sure that went through. And we're looking forward to getting going on this very important project. The, the tree planting, we, for the Mapleway, we have a plant and all prepared. Mike and, Mike McCarthy and Tom are working on the proper language for the, the two and a half acres off of Farm Street. And Ballister will be, we've removed the substation, and we will be doing some site cleanup there in the spring and then move forward with creating the passive park at that location. So everything's ready to move forward, and we're, we're looking forward to getting going.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the council? No? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming on for a brief discussion late into our meeting. Item number seven, licenses. We have a series of business license renewals for 2024. Do we have one really big motion for all of it?
Yes, move to approve the licenses.
I think if we had, as presented in the pack, that'd be.
As presented in the pack.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 7-0. Item number eight is appointment of student liaisons to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Counselor Smith-Galvin is liaison, do you want to speak to this?
So these are the students, when we voted, I actually think the rules are in there as well, we can appoint at least one ex officio student number. We had three applications. I would like to propose that we appoint all three. We have found that the student members really add tremendous amount of value and connect us to, to the youth who have concerns about environmental issues. So I think that it would make sense to have all three.
Great. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Dobrowski?
What is the composition for the ESC? Do we have?
Do we have, do we have-
In total, you mean?
No, do we have the, the seats for three, or what are you proposing with that, Counselor Smith-Galvin?
We have, so the next C and the next, there's actually a link. We have eight appointments, so in addition to one appointment of the spoken committee of Public Works, Gas and Light, Town Council, and in essence, we can have at least one ex officio member of high school or middle school students ages 13 to 18. So we meet virtually, so there's plenty of room. You know, as I said earlier, you know, we may rethink kind of the schedule on it, but we do a fair number of tabling and events, kind of like the HRC where the students can add some value. We also have one liaison from the council who's quite involved.
But the student members, just the policies and procedures, they are non-voting members.
Exactly.
We are able to, we are asked to kind of appoint at least one, but there's no upper limit.
Right, that's what I was getting at, right, understand that.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion to approve all three applicants. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 7-0, and congratulations and thank you to our student volunteers. Item 9, we have a request for $150 donation to the council on aging. Is there a motion?
Move that we accept the donation to the council on aging with thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 7-0. Item number 10, warrants. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Warrant number 16 is for $7.6 million in change, principally that's Treasurer, Light Department, and Group Insurance. Warrant number 18 is for $5.2 million in change. Public Works was 1.3 million of that, and the Town Council was 1.7 million of that. Most of that was, virtually all of it, was related to the new high school. Left Field, Sims Maintenance, McKee, Bond Building as well. And then warrant number 20 is $6.2 million in change, and the bulk of that is Public Works, Light Department, and Group Insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Seeing none, thank you, Counselor Vincent. Item number 11, approval of minutes. I'm going to do these, ask for one motion to approve the November 27th and December 5th town council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, any objection to approving the minutes as drafted? Seeing none, minutes are approved. Item number 12, we have a resident request to fly a pro-life flag at the second flagpole of the American Civic Center from December 18th through the, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Do we have a motion to that regard?
Move to entertain the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Dobrowski?
I'll just say that, I'll just be on record again saying that since our flag policy has been in place, my policy, what I call the Dobrowski doctrine, is that I am only voting in favor of the American flag and the KOW, MIA flag, regardless of what request comes before us, so that will be consistent with how I'll be voting this evening as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Counselor McLean?
I would simply say that my compromise request was to fly the US flag on Flag Day only. There was a provision in there that no other flags would be requested, but that's not a reason that I'm not going to vote. I'm going to vote so that people know how I would vote on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
No.
Counselor Vincent?
No.
Counselor Danahue?
No.
Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Butt?
Nope.
Counselor Dobrowski?
No.
And myself, no. Motion fails, 0-7. Any announcements? A quiet group, oh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Reefs Across America is going to be on December 16th, that's Saturday at noon, at the Forest Glade Cemetery. I'm proud to announce that through the generosity of Wakefield residents and others, there were 582 reefs that were sponsored. That was 35% over the goal. It was exceeded by 152 reefs. So that's very, very commendable to see the response to these, and the ceremony doesn't take very long, and at the end of the ceremony, then you're having an opportunity to go out and put out a reef. Once again, that's on Saturday at noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry, Counselor Dobrowski?
All right, I just had one, very quick one. You may know that we had our snowplow contest and that the winner was Queen Elsa with, I believe, 2,054 votes. So we got quite, quite a bit of traction on this.
Queen Elsa.
So here's our new snowplow, so congratulations. Thank you, I just thought that was kind of a fun fact.
Clearly, we have some frozen fans in Wakefield.
Yes, exactly. I had to ask what it was.
I just did. I just asked.
Oh, welcome to my world over the last several years. Counselor Dobrowski?
I think Elsa may have gotten more votes than perhaps anyone sitting at this table.
Yeah.
A couple of things. First, I wanted to just give a shout out to the senior center. I had a great opportunity to have a day of reindeer games with our seniors, and it was a ton of fun, really enjoyed it. So thanks to everyone for coming out for that really great opportunity. This Friday night, the Boys and Girls Club will have their annual Santa sleigh ride going down Main Street. For those who are not familiar with it, it's a great opportunity for the kids to stand out along Main Street and to see Santa in the sleigh. There are volunteer reindeers, I being one of them, perhaps others at this table as well.
I will be there, too.
All right, so by all means, please check it out if you can. Wanted to also recognize Hanukkah, which I think has a special meaning this year for a lot of, a lot of folks in our community, certainly, and it may, you know, the light burn and glow brighter than ever this year. I know that in times of darkness is our, that's where we can sometimes find the brightest light. So recognizing all of our Jewish neighbors and friends during this, during this time of, what should be a time of celebration under normal circumstances. Wanted, our last meeting of the year, wanted to wish everyone else a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Look forward to seeing everyone next year. And with that, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? No? Seeing none, I will just mention I do have office hours next Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the BB Library, so please come by and say hello. And also, just want to reiterate our wishes from the town council to all of Wakefield for a happy holiday season, a safe holiday season, and New Year. We appreciate everyone who does so much for this town and contributes to this community, and we're grateful, certainly for myself, grateful to be, be sitting here, helping to guide the community forward and to work with all of you. So happy holidays, be safe, be well, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the New Year. Item number 14, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? No, seeing none. Item number 15 is adjournment. Again, our next meeting is January 8th, 2024 at 7 o'clock. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any objection to adjournment? No, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned at 9:01 PM. Thank you very much. Happy holidays, happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.